I would like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
Sure.
Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who isn't already on the agenda who would like to speak to the school committee? Yes, sir, please come down and identify yourself.
Hi, Dan Bell, Nine Stetson Court. I've got a daughter in the high school and my son graduated in 2015. The reason I'm coming here tonight really doesn't involve them at all. It's more about the community at large and the current situation with the FCC proposal about the funding and the franchise fees that are coming in associated with the cable subscriptions. And the reason I'm here is I really think it's time to just put that right in the school budget and not really look at it like this is what we're getting and if, you know, the franchise fees goes away, so does the whole program. You know, this is an award-winning program and it's great. It's an unbelievable program. I don't have any ties to it. I mean, I worked in it. I have some knowledge about the funding because I've been in that industry. I worked for PACT-TV for a little bit. I worked with Sandwich Community Television. Right now, I'm not. I don't really have any interest in it other than I really think that if it goes away, it would be very, very sad. So, in light of that, that there is this risk right now happening that these, this funding may go away, you know, I just wanted to, you know, present that I really think that should be looked at and just put into the budget. And if you do lose the funding, then the impact is felt across the board with the entire budget. It's not a matter of, okay, so now we're taking everything out of media. I just feel that. And even if this does go through, you know, even if this does get combatted and the FCC thing doesn't happen, you still have reduced funding coming in because the money that comes in is just based on TV subscriptions, not on Internet. So, more and more people that are cutting the cord, so to speak, is money that's not coming in. And that's happening more and more and eventually maybe we won't even have cable channels and that source of funding is going to be gone anyways. So, that's really all I have to say. I really, you know, it's a great program and I hate to see it go, but, you know, that's my thought on it.
Thank you. You expressed many of the sentiments that we all share, so thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the committee? Okay. Student representatives, we shall start with North.
Hi. So, North, so we have our NHS induction coming up, which will be Thursday, November 29th, and it will be held in the Performing Arts Center at 7:00 PM. And we also have the Thanksgiving Day coming up, which we are hosting this Thursday. Tickets will be $5 up until tomorrow, which we're selling at school, and then $8 the day of the game. It will be held at 10:00 AM. And we've also been undergoing Spirit Week and all classes are working together to win a spirit trophy. And each day, we await final numbers from the previous day of who is like the winner of the day. As of Friday, fourth place is the freshmen, third places are the sophomores, second place are the seniors, and in first place are the juniors. Late buses are not going to be held tomorrow due to the holiday. And bus passes were distributed last week, so if your student did not get a bus pass, please have them see Mrs. Kendall in the main office. Tomorrow, Tuesday, November 20th, there'll be pep rally for the students to get ready for the big football game. On Wednesday, November 21st through Sunday, November 25th, will be Thanksgiving break, so we will have no school. And when we come back after break, tryouts for winter sports will begin, so that the sports are basketball, hockey, wrestling, winter track, cheer, dance, and gymnastics. So, be sure to, make sure your kid is registered on family ID and their current physical is on file. And then on Wednesday, November 28th, we have a school council meeting at 6:00 PM in the library and we encourage all to come. And Wednesday, on Wednesday, December 5th, we have our Fall Sports Night Awards and then on Wednesday, and then on the same day, we are also having a meeting for Chinese host families.
All right, thank you. And now, South.
The Thanksgiving pep rally will take place tomorrow afternoon. We're looking forward to another great event as we recognize Fall League All-Stars and a few surprises for the students. Performances by the band South Ave Cheer &amp; Dance will certainly get the students excited for the big game Thursday at Plymouth North. Tickets go in sale at school for $5 and $8 at the gate. Black and Chill tomorrow for the pep rally. Patterpuff happened last Thursday and the sophomores battled the juniors in the championship as snowflakes fell. Thank you all who came to support and the sophomores ended up taking the trophy. The PYDC has been really active in making our students aware of the dangers of various destructive decisions. On November 29th, we have, we will have a presentation of If They Had Known: The Clay Soper Story for our seniors during K Block and an evening portion for the parents. The presentation is about the dangers of mixing alcohol and prescription drugs. Twenty-eight turkey baskets went out to families in need today thanks to the efforts of the PSHS students and staff. Student council expects more to go out tomorrow and thank you all for giving back to the PSHS community. Fifteen staff members participated in No Shave November to raise money for the charity of their choice. The winner will be selected tomorrow at lunches and the cosmetology team cleaned up the men today with some interesting designs for Spirit Week. Members of our football and cheer teams read to the elementary schools today. This is an outstanding tradition of a way of giving back to the elementary schools. Student athletes had a wonderful time reading to the students. South Ave sponsored a Fall Acapella Invitational last Friday, a wonderful night of talent thanks to the Spectrum, On The Vox, and Uproar for joining South Ave and making it an outstanding show. Our Theater Guild absolutely impressed the audience during all three performances of A Midsummer Night's Dream. The play was in the Black Box Theater, which made it truly an ultimate experience for the guests and actors. Tremendous job to everyone. And a reminder that students taking the AP exam, that the payment is due and there are 259 AP exams administered this year at PSHS. Congratulations to Junior Strickland Davis, who placed 14th in the state meet of cross-country at Westfield.
Thank you, Ruby and Abigail. Thank you very much for those reports. Well done. The next item on our agenda is old business. Are there committee members within any need to bring up an item from the old business list? Okay, new business. I have one item, well, we took an item off the list last week, so now we can put one back on. I have a concern that I've had for a while and we have several occurrences in our code of discipline whereby a student is suspended for 10 days, usually related to drugs or some drug paraphernalia, something of that nature. And I'm hoping that we could revisit that, that code of conduct and I'll tell you why. And it's for a specific type of student. There are those students who will get a 10-day suspension and become pretty, pretty much quite upset by missing school for 10 days. And some of them, who are prone to depression, can find themselves in a real state of hopelessness. They're out for 10 days, they don't know what to do, probably the ninth grade is more than the seniors, I would think. And I'm sort of hoping that we could have an adjustment to our code whereby somebody in-house could reach out to one, to those students who are sitting home for 10 days and give them some sense of hope or at the very least, help them get their work so they know they still, they're still connected. I see the possibility of a depressed child sitting home for 10 days and just getting so hopeless and not doing a stitch of work. I'm kind of hoping that by reaching out, by having a vehicle by which we reach out, we hang on to these types, these types of vulnerable kids. Now, there will be children, students, who, who won't even take our offer and we can't make them, what do they say, you can make, you can't make them float on their back, but at least we can make the offer. So, I'm sort of hoping we could have a change to that, that code of, code of discipline so that students can have a connection during that 10 days out. So, I'd like to know if all the committee members feel this is a good idea or not or Central Office?
I will comment to it. I know, Dr. Sorensen, you and I have had, have had conversations regarding to this and I think one of the things that we are starting to realize more and more is, is there are instances where kids are suspended for 10 days and those instances can be somewhat devastating to a child, not only by the infraction, by, but by how it impacts them academically. And sometimes there are other things that happen in their life that we're not even aware about and sometimes we find out those things based on this occurrence. So, one of the things that, you know, we, I've talked to our, one of our high school principals about it and I think it's almost a brainstorming session of opportunities that we could provide for students that fall into this category. And it's a system of care in a sense, so when these children fall into that category of what do we have for supports to make sure that they don't disengage because it, you know, it depends on the time of the year when these things happen too, that they, sometimes they feel it's going to ruin their whole career or their senior year or other instances. So, I think you bring a very valid point and I think there's, I think there's opportunity here to sit with our administrators and actually walk through some of these scenarios to figure out what we can do in district to support our children.
Any other, any other thoughts on that? I know of a student who generally always honor roll and she got a 10-day suspension and, and she totally fell apart. She's never gotten a grade below an A but, and got involved in vaping, I mean, that's the problem.
Yep.
And got the 10 days and was just, just a wreck. So, I'm glad, I'm glad you're dialoguing.
You know, Dr. Sorensen, I, you know, this is just an opportunity to, to highlight that, that vaping, you know, is really becoming our predominant concern in our schools and it's not just regular vaping, but there's different forms of product that are being vaped, which I never even thought vaped was a word, but I'm using it. But, you know, it's just, it's just one of those conditions that we're living with and I think medically, there are some other conditions that are happening out there for children that because they're engaging in this, they're developing other health conditions that I think, you know, Dr. Campbell and I and Assistant Superintendent Frye were talking tonight about the possibility of doing a forum for parents on what these vape tools are but, and what's happening and I'm more concerned about their long-term health. I think we may need to consider doing a community-wide forum to invite parents and, you know, don't hear from us, you know, I don't want them to hear from us telling these stories, what we hear in school. I want them to hear from the medical professionals that actually are engaging with this every day and they start seeing conditions that didn't exist prior. So, I think it only, you bring up the point about what happens after, you know, about kids and being engaged. I think, you know, I think it's a different, another approach and how do we convince them that this is something they shouldn't do, you know?
I mean, I read a study recently, this is fairly new phenomenon, you know, within a decade, and I read a study on urine analysis of 16-year-olds and they did a urine analysis of 16-year-olds who were vaping and then compared that urine to 16-year-olds who were not vaping and they found five precancerous toxins in the urine of the students that were vaping.
One thing I've been working on this year, we're doing professional development with the vice principals, sixth to 12, and they're really trying to think of creative strategies to look beyond just the discipline because it's about, as Dr. Maestas said, the connection that happens sometimes after the situation, but you have to keep the conversation going. So, I think a check-in like that would be critical and, you know, happens in certain cases, but not in all and it should be something we are able to standardize.
Good, good. Anything else on the new business?
Just concerning the forum regarding vaping, perhaps we could get like a pediatric pulmonologist to be involved or some sort of threat.
Maybe you can help with that.
I bet you could.
I think we have to make sure that we're, you know, it's inclusive of, we're having issues at the middle school too and that's where we really need to start educating the kids younger and the families younger.
Yes.
Because there's this misperception, you know, this of like low risk of harm. And as you said, Dr. Sorensen, it's a relatively new phenomenon and we're seeing issues now. Also, water lung is another one that is, that's fairly recent that I just heard about on NPR.
Which one is that?
Called water lung. We have students that are presenting as if they have pneumonia, but it's, it's the water vapor that's depositing in the lungs and it's constricting blood, it's, it's creating a lot of issues that we haven't seen before.
I know years ago, they had an issue. It was concerning people who worked at popcorn factories and it was the flavoring that caused this, like, you know, these popcorn lung or whatever. And so, now it's a concern that these particular flavorings that we're finding in vaping could cause that as well.
Exactly.
But unfortunately, because it's, you know, this is only a decade into this, it's, you know, that research.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, as you said, Dr. Sorensen, it's not just about, you know, there needs to be consequences for, for behaviors, but more importantly, we need to try to re-educate and get the kids. Get the students to rethink their actions so that they don't want to do that again and empower them to make better decisions.
Yes.
That starts early, right, and often and we have to sort of disseminate that information in multiple ways, whether it's through, you know, the counselors, their teachers, their, their advisories, their coaches. The message needs to be loud and clear and systemic. We can't just be, you know, doing it here and there. So, it's a, it's a, I had a phone call this afternoon from a parent who caught her daughter with some product and is really, really concerned about that. So, we had a good conversation about, you know, how to, you know, what kind of, how you can educate your child on the harmful effects and what we're also trying to do as a district, but we do need, as Dr. Maestas said, this is a community issue and we really need to involve the families in this. We really do.
Ms. Hunt.
What do the kids, do the kids get any kind of a workshop or anything in school?
It's in the, it's in the health.
How much in there?
We've embedded it in the health curriculum. Kelly Maycomber has also been a great addition to help bring resources to the schools. It's been disseminated through, it's being disseminated through the athletic teams as well, but we've got to find other ways just to.
They don't get health every year, like.
No, they don't. There's no guarantee that they're going to get health. So, the kids who are seniors may not be getting that information now, so we've got to find other ways to get that information in their hands. I was just in Kelly's office and she's got some resources that she was sending out to the administrators at all the secondary levels tomorrow of information just on this topic on vaping, so.
I think they need to hear, I've seen it a lot, just in amongst friends and everything and I think they need to hear it from someone other than a parent because a parent, they just kind of glaze over and.
Right. I think there's a lot of parents out there that really don't know how bad it is.
Yes.
Right, well, that's it.
They really do.
Yeah. Well, I mentioned, last time, I mentioned to somebody that I saw with one that I said to them, "Oh, I didn't know you smoked." And they're like, "I don't smoke." So, I, I just don't think that they're taking it serious and a parent talking to them doesn't always, isn't always effective.
Exactly, but a coach could, it could be, you know, or a peer group could, this, you have to, you have to get them where, you know.
I mean, I'm seeing it a lot too, like, these kids, seniors are 18, so they can go out and buy it, so it's just.
This PYDC.
Until January or December.
Until, yes, yes.
Lots of places in the building because there's a lot of research on.
But they're not stopping, the kids aren't stopping to read that, you know?
But somebody does stop to read it.
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt.
It just, whatever we can do to just plant the seed, right? We get to plant the seed and have it, you know, in different forums and different formats, large and small, presentations and in other formats, we just need to, it's like the whole big fight against tobacco years ago, right? It took.
You never see that, well, not as much.
The kids realize when we, when we do our surveys of kids, they know that smoking, cigarette smoking is dangerous. They see the perceived risk. They recognize that. They don't recognize it for other substances necessarily. So, we have to, I think we have to try to do what we can in as many formats as we can.
Ms. Badger.
You've probably already thought of it, but I think it might be another opportunity to engage those student leaders that you engaged last year when we had those difficult decisions about the school shootings and things like school safety, so it might be a nice way to get them involved in how to get to their peers because, like Ms. Hunt said, they don't want to hear it from their teachers, they don't want to hear it from their parents. It's, you know, yeah, it's hard. I mean, even like college students, they don't think it's, they don't, they do not think that that is, it's nicotine. I mean, some of it is just the, whatever, the flavor pods, but that still does some damage to your lungs, so.
Yep, yep. And the high school usage has gone up 89% since last year.
Wow.
Not in our, nationwide.
They, but they're talking about making it 21 and doing away with flavors except for the original and mint or something, you know, like the yellow cigarettes.
The mango and the.
Yeah, all that other stuff.
Sour patch.
Well, they haven't done it yet, so.
Well, they're going to make it themselves.
Yeah.
They will.
Yeah, you're right.
It's, it's just a true story, how casual it can be. So, we have a student, not in our district, but in a high school right near here. Somebody knows that he has a portable charger, all right, so he's got the charger that he would use for his cellphone, right? He walks into the bathroom and somebody knows that he has a charger and they say to this young man, "Hey, if you let us charge the jewel, we'll give you a hit."
Wow.
So, he lets them charge the jewel and he takes a hit of the, he takes a hit of the THC. Needless to say, he's incapacitated and, because he's never done it before, but it's so casual, "Let us use your charger and we'll give you a hit." That's not in our district, but that was nearby here.
Jeez.
Needless to say, he ended up in the nurse's office and home within a couple of hours, so. But anyway, I'm glad we talked about it. You know, it's in the direction we need to go.
Thank you.
On both sides, before and after.
Absolutely.
Reports and proposals from the superintendent, Dr. Maestas.
Yes, I have four items to report on tonight. I, I know Ms. Burgess will probably speak to it a little bit later on, but I had the opportunity Saturday to witness our students at the parade and also at Illuminate. And it was such a fantastic, fantastic opportunity to see our students on the stage and performing and to see them and the quality of their performances and, and, you know, it was very, it was wonderful. I had the opportunity to talk with a lady who was awarded the Inspiration Illuminate Award and she, she's from New York and I talked to her mom after the presentation and she said that, you know, "I was not feeling all that patriotic or feeling that there was a lot of good things happening in this country until I came to Plymouth and had the opportunity to be part of something so special as this." And I felt really proud that, you know, somebody can come from another state and just be part of a small presentation, which is a sampling of what we have to offer here in our community. And it was, you know, she just was so blown away by the student performances and the opportunity that the students had to express themselves, which is something that we, all of us around this table strive for every minute that we are in our schools and around this table. So, that was a wonderful, wonderful evening. There will be no school on Wednesday. I know the students would be happy to know that. We'll see how that goes. And I had the opportunity today to present at the Pine Hills. We have a group up there that, that sponsors a great deal of support, talk about Thanksgiving. The group, it's called Woman Aid and they're, the women of Pine Hills do a tremendous job in supporting our children and from the beginning of school to today, they, they have donated over $11,000 for aid for our families. And I typically go up there and do a presentation and kind of give a state of schools to them and I did that today and it was supposed to be half an hour and two hours later, I got out of there, so.
Wow.
But it was, it was very good. And the last thing I have, about a week ago, we had the opportunity to visit, we had some friends visit from Italy, from Milan and we have formed a, a partnership with the school in Milan and the school is right in the center of Milan, right in downtown. And I got to know one of the people that works for the school on an international visit that I went to and we've become friends over the years and he asked me, he's a principal in Italy for many years and asked if they'd be, if we'd be interested in, in doing some, some exchange work with, with students, middle school students from Milan and middle school students from the United States. So, they came on an exploratory visit, met with the principals, both middle schools and I, we took them, spent the day taking them from the high schools, middle schools, took them to lunch at Culinary and they were, they just could not believe what's happening in our schools. They were just thrilled. And when they left, they said, "Can we work, work with partnership at the high school too?" And I'm very impressed with their English. They take English early in Italy and I tell you, their English was, it was, I was grateful because I can understand a little bit of Italian because it sounds kind of like Spanish, but I tell you what, they, they really helped me out with that. But very encouraging to know that there's a very, very high-quality school in Italy that wants to work with us here to potentially do some exchange at the middle level with Milan, which would be very similar to host family settings. So, I anticipate in the next six months or so, we may have a, a opportunity for kids to come. I believe the kids will come here and then we would probably go there, but we're going to be working on that and you'll see something come in front of you for approval in the near future. And that's my report.
Any, any questions for Dr. Maestas? Correspondence, Mr. Morgan?
Last I checked, let me just confirm, no correspondence this evening.
And now, we have the follow-up from the MASC meeting. Ms. Hunt.
You just want me to talk about the resolutions, right?
Please.
Okay. So.
We skipped.
Oh, we skipped something.
Did I skip something?
Yes.
Oh, South Middle. Oh, South Middle.
Again, again, I'm working from an agenda that is not up-to-date agenda.
I didn't even follow it either, so, yeah.
That's my mistake, my mistake. We have the old agenda, not the new agenda. Okay.
He was hoping that.
Dr. Maestas.
Tonight, we are graced to have the administration and school council of Plymouth South Middle School and they're here to present to you the school improvement document and school council presentation for Plymouth South Middle School this year. So, welcome, Principal Morgan Wick and team.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Just reflecting on the meetings that we had with the Italian school leaders that Dr. Maestas was speaking about, at lunch, we had a chance to ask them how old their school was and they said that they started talking amongst themselves, trying to figure out how to say it in English, and they explained that their school was built in the 1500s, which means that their school has been there longer than Plymouth has been here.
[laughter]
But it's, but it's very impressive. So, good evening. I am Steve Morgan Wick. I'm the principal of Plymouth South Middle School. I'm happy to be here tonight to present our school improvement plan for you. I'm joined here tonight by two representatives from our school council. We have a much larger group, but they are, it's a busy time of the year and people had childcare issues and other, other things going on, so, but I'm very happy to have Miss, Mrs. Melissa Morse, that's, that's hard to say, put it all together, a lot of Ms.'s, who is a medical assisting instructor at South High School, so she wears that hat. She is also the mother of a student in South High School, a student in South Middle School and a student in South Elementary School, so she has a trifecta in that regard as well. So, she is able to represent the past, present, and the future of South Middle School as on our council. We also have Mr. Andy Loretz here. Andy is our music and band director at South Middle School and one of our teacher representatives for our council. Sorry, is this on? Talking to it and see.
Hello.
Check, check. They're coming. Where do I?
Hello, hello?
Just use it, it's for the, it's for television.
They'll probably hear it in there.
Sorry.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Well, good evening to all of you. Thank you for having us. We wanted to start our presentation by giving you a brief overview of the demographics at Plymouth South Middle School. So, currently, we have 710 students. The breakdown, as you can see, is grade six has 228, grade seven, 248, grade eight is at 234. And we actually have three district-wide classrooms, so there is a life skills class and two ASD classrooms as well. So, the breakdown here with more of our demographics is 20% of students with disabilities. We have 19% economic. So, the breakdown here with more of our demographics is twenty percent of students with disabilities, we have nineteen percent economically disadvantaged, and thirty-three percent are high-needs. So our staffing is fifty-three teachers, we have eleven other certificated staff, three administrators, and Plymouth South Middle School also hosts two, uh, pilgrim area collaborative programs as well. So, and I will.
Hi, good evening, I'm Andy Loretz. Um, so we will be presenting a new school improvement plan tonight, um, but before we do that, we wanted to provide you with a quick summary of our work from the last year. Uh, the plan that we concluded at the end of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year was driven by four goals. Um, those go- goals were to, uh, enhance student social and emotional growth, health and welfare, and, uh, a demonstration of civ- civic responsibility. Um, the second goal was to increase family and community engagement, and the third goal was to enhance academic achievements of all students at all levels, and the last goal was to provide strong district and school leadership.
Those goals should sound familiar, because they are very concurrent with the school committee goals, and, uh, that was designed in our last school improvement plan to provide consistent, uh, leadership between the schools and the, the town, or the district. I wanted to touch base upon a couple of the accomplishments that we were able to, uh, to see over the course of the last year. Uh, our service learning projects led to the creation of a food assistance program and an anti-vaping program or campaign. Uh, just really quickly, these are, these were student-driven initiatives that came out of classrooms, so the development of, uh, of a program where students collected food to be able to send home with, with family, for families who were struggling with food insecurity on the weekends and over vacations, um, coming out of a service learning project that the students took on themselves and, and saw as a, as a need in our community, and ran with it. Our anti-vaping campaign got quite a bit of notoriety last year, um, and I, I, I would venture to guess that the students that were involved with that, our eighth-grade students who are now freshmen in high school, would more than be happy to be a part of any forum that you guys might put together, or that we could put together, um, as well. They worked very closely with PYDC and Kelly McComber. Uh, they also, I mean, they went, they, for me, that was the big success story of the year, uh, to have a, uh, a classroom program or a classroom, uh, lesson turn into a civic and uh, service learning opportunity like it did. The students started by recognizing that there was an issue with vaping, uh, amongst their peers, they wanted to simply create a poster campaign to raise awareness. That led to them creating a, a series of presentations for their younger peers in the building, which they presented to both seventh graders and eighth, uh, seventh and sixth graders last year. They ended up bringing in, uh, Representative Muratori and Senator DiMascito, and they talked to them about, about the different, uh, aspects of the laws and around vaping. They ended up presenting at a public health meeting here in Plymouth. So for students who were studying civics, uh, as opposed to learning about that process from worksheets or, or textbooks, they were active members of that process, and I, hopefully they got a great learning experience out of that, but certainly they were able to influence many people in the process, uh, and including, they, they were very vocal in the push for raising the age of being able to purchase vaping items from eighteen to twenty-one, um, and I think that their hope, that they are continuing to work towards that goal themselves, so. Uh, we, we also had an increased number of students, uh, taking on leadership roles throughout the building, uh, over the course of the last year. We also had, uh, quarterly leadership councils that we hadn't had in the past, where students met with me and we were able to talk about different issues that we had at school, and really give them a voice in the process of school, school leadership. Uh, we, we increased our honors. We used to, to really just focus on honoring academic achievement in terms of your traditional honor roll, and now we recognize, uh, other categories such as community service, uh, uh, leadership, perseverance, and things like that. Mr. Loretz actually has started a, along with Mrs. Tyler, our, our other music teacher, have started the Musician of the Month program as well, so we're recognizing students in the arts as well, uh, or in specialized areas of, of instruction and, and, and learning. We have created additional collaborations between South Middle School and South High School. The proximity of the building, again, I love that the building got closer to us, and so now it's a, it's, as I keep saying to Dr. Campbell, it's a two-and-a-half-minute walk for a man with short legs. So it's an easy, easy transition to and from the buildings. So we're able to now take our students to South High more frequently, and have students from South High come to our school more easily, and, and have some interactions that we didn't have in the past. Whereas in the, where the old building was, we'd have to take a bus up the access road, uh, now it's, it's a quick and easy connection, connection for our, our students and our faculty. The tech, the tech presentations that we do every December, for instance, that this, this is, this will be the first December that we're able to take our students and bring them to South High School and go into the, uh, auditorium and be able to present the tech program to our seventh, eighth-grade students in that space. Last year, we were able to take our students over to the tech, the tech expo, um, and save the district some money, because in the past, we've had to bus the students over to the tech expo, even though it was on the same campus, and last year, again, they all could just walk back and forth, and, and that's a great benefit for us as well, so. We also have the opportunity for our faculty members to be able to do more, um, more planning, co-planning, and in terms of vertical alignment of the curriculum, and we're, we're, we're exploring additional ways of offering those opportunities for our faculty also. And we also have, uh, both PCIS and PSMS partnered with, with Rising Tide in, uh, a grant-funded program on social-emotional learning, and so it started off with a small number of teachers from each middle school from Plymouth that were a part of that program, and that has now expanded, and it's continuing to expand into next year as well. We had a meeting about that recently. In addition to having teachers being trained in social-emotional learning, we're also being able now to provide an opportunity for uh, guidance counselors, school psychologists, and other service providers in our school, um, faculty, our, our school, uh, staff to be able to be a part of that, that learning as well.
So, next, it brings us to our new plan. So tonight, this is on a school improvement plan written for the years two thousand and eighteen through twenty twenty-one. It follows the new format for school improvement plans that all Plymouth school councils have been encouraged to adopt.
Um, and our school improvement plan features five strategic objectives on which we will focus our efforts over the next three years. Um, and so those objectives are to facilitate, wow, facilitate the adoption of new state frameworks and curricular models within the academic program, uh, improve overall student performance in areas of concern, identified through item analysis of the MCAS data and accountability reports, uh, improve subgroup performance on MCAS assessments for ELA, math, and STE, that was science, um, technology, engineering, and improve attendance and reduce the rate of chronic absenteeism, as well as promote relationship building, um, as a fundamental component of student success. And so to help us achieve those objectives, we have developed action plans for the current year. Tonight, we will share three of those action plans in more detail. And so the first action plan reflects the strategic objective to improve overall student performance on MCAS standards, in which PSMS students scored below the state average in two thousand and eighteen. And so the rationale for this was that while the overall performance of, uh, of our students on the two thousand and eighteen MCAS assessments were, um, pretty good and exceeded state growth expectations for ELA, uh, scores in math and STE were slightly lower. Um, and so we wanted to meet that target in math, um, and improve it below the target in STE. Um, anticipated outcomes of this is that a twenty percent decrease in the performance gap between PSMS and the state average on the four standards with the largest score differential. So that would be statistics and probability, operations and expressions, geometry, and the life sciences.
Thank you. So, when I started, uh, in, in my tenure here at South Middle School, the literacy, there was already a culture around supporting and promoting literacy in the building, and what we've been able to do over the last couple of years is really take that from just literacy, then we added math as another focus al- also. The literacy program, or the literacy, um, committees that we had in place were able to promote literacy across the curriculum. What we were finding was that with our math performance on state assessments, we were finding gaps, uh, gaps of, of concepts, gaps in the learning. And so we've assembled, the last two years, we've had a math data team in place that has been able to look closely and delve deeply into the curriculum and make sure that there are no gaps in our curriculum from grade, it was grade five through grade eight when it started, and now it's grade six through grade eight, and then beyond. So we are, and we're, and we have, um, we have collaboration with the elementary schools and the high schools as well, so we can continue the, the transition from going into school and then coming out of middle school as well. But the idea was, is to really make sure that what we're teaching focuses very strongly and very, um, directly on learning standards that the state has established, and they keep kind of changing and, and, um, being modified, and as that happens, there is a, uh, there's a need to continue to look at where and when and how things are being taught, and so that's part of our, one, the first part of our action plan is to make sure, uh, that we're enhancing our units of study, especially in the areas that we have identified as being those, uh, where we were, where we fell short. Statistics and probability, for instance, one of the things that we're gonna be doing this year is we, we're gonna have a professional development on promoting statistics across the curriculum. It seems like such an easy idea, but statistics really can be used, or should be used, in all, any, any area of study. But right now, it feels like it's being left as just a math instructional point, whereas our science teachers, our social studies teachers, our ELA teachers could all be using it, or our math teach, or, sorry, our music teachers, all could be using it in their classrooms and promoting exposure to statistics. So the idea that our students aren't quite sure what they are, how to use them, uh, we're hoping to, to break that down by having them use them more frequently, or at least see them more frequently, and, and get a better sense of, of how they work. Things like, uh, life science, uh, we are, again, taking a look more closely at our units of study and really trying to enhance them to, uh, be very hands-on and, uh, have the students go in-depth in those areas versus kind of the, the more surface levels that we've been at in the last couple of years. So that's part of our, part of our goal. That's gonna be ongoing over the course of the year, uh, as those different units of study come up. We're also gonna be looking to develop common, common formative and summative assessments for different units, the areas that, especially where we, where we feel like we have some weaknesses or some, some opportunities for growth. We wanna make sure that what we think we're teaching the kids, we are. We wanna make sure that they're understanding to the extent that we think that they should be understanding, and so having those common formative and summative assessments allows us to, to measure that as we go forward. We also want to, again, promote the greater understanding of statistics, I just explained that in more detail, a little bit earlier too, so.
So our second action plan reflects the strategic, strategic objective, improve subgroup performances on MCAS assessments for ELA, math, and STE. So you can see here our rationale, while the overall performance of Plymouth South Middle School students on the twenty eighteen MCAS assessments met or exceeded the state growth expectations, students and the economically disadvantaged and students with disability, disability subgroups did not. So our anticipated, um, outcomes, we are hoping that we will see a ten percent increase in the number of students in the economically disadvantaged and SWD subgroups receive scores of proficient or advanced on the twenty nineteen MCAS assessments.
One of the things that we've been looking at, uh, more closely as a faculty is how do we support students with trauma-based backgrounds? And whether that is, uh, children from families of divorce, or whether that's, you know, children who have experienced abuse or neglect, or are struggling with sexuality, or, um, have had other types of domestic issues that have been a part of their, their upbringing. We recognize that, that different students arrive at our doors each day carrying different bags, or different baggage, and that we cannot simply assume that just because they've arrived today, that they're gonna be able to focus or, or perform at the same level as all of their peers. So part of our job is to really have a better understanding of what types of adverse childhood experiences our students may be dealing with, and the different ways that we can help support them, uh, as learners, which goes beyond content delivery. And so we're, that's, that's been a main focus of our PD over the course of the year, and will continue to be as we go forward, uh, working with different stu- different students with different backgrounds, and, uh, finding the multiple ways that we can help support learners of diverse backgrounds. We also want to be able to engage in a regular review of the performance of these, of these subgroups. We haven't had a whole lot of conversations in the past as a faculty about the, the, about these different groups, about the economically disadvantaged youth and, and, uh, students with disabilities. We wanna have more pointed, more focused conversations about those, and really delve more deeply into the review of their performance. And that, use that data that we're able to collect to have conversations, to identify strategies, to be able to more, more directly support these students. And lastly, we want to develop, uh, specific interventions for individual students based on the review of performance data. I know that in the past, I assume, I, I shouldn't assume this, but I know that we've done a lot of work, uh, as an administration with Panorama, uh, as one of our new platforms, and the ability to have quick and easy access to information about a child's attendance, behaviors, uh, academic performance, uh, and even other, other characteristics allows us to be able to talk in a very, uh, efficient, effective way about students as individuals, and then develop interventions and supports for individuals, and that's one of the things that we're gonna continue to push throughout the course of this year. Right now, there's a limited number of people in each middle school that have access to Panorama, and we're working as a district on trying to make that more accessible to all teachers, so they can have that snapshot of their students, and then be able to use that data, uh, that, that data program more, more easily.
Um, and so our third action plan reflects the strategic, strategic objective to improve attendance and reduce the rate of chronic absenteeism. Um, and the reasoning behind this is that accountability data indicated that the rate of chronic absenteeism increased from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, uh, with the most notable increase in the economically disadvantaged subgroup. During that same timeframe, the number of out-of-school suspensions, uh, suspensions doubled at PSMS. And so hopefully, the anticipated outcomes will be, um, a twenty percent decrease in the rate of chronic absenteeism reported for, uh, school, from school year two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen.
And to speak again, going back to Dr. Sorenson's point earlier in, in this, uh, meeting, certainly with the, the out-of-school suspension rate doubling over the course of that year, it's really started, it's really forced us to take a closer look at what we're doing and how we're, how we're, uh, imposing sanctions. Uh, many of those, uh, out-of-school suspensions were similar to what you were talking about earlier, kind of those, those, uh, major infractions that seem to carry with them the, the default sanction. And so looking at how we better utilize our planning center or in-school suspension program, how we better utilize other, um, other forms of discipline and, and reflective and, and restorative discipline, we're gonna continue to have those conversations over the course of the year. We're also going to, again, engage in a regular review of data from Aspen, Panorama, and the Early Warning Indicating System from the State Department of Education to identify appropriate interventions and supports for students who have attendance issues. We're gonna provide additional teacher training on preventative management and positive discipline techniques, so we hopefully don't get to a point where suspension seems like it's the only, um, the only possible outcome. Uh, and if we can keep these students, A, in school, and B, wanting to be in school, then those are, those are the ways that we're gonna be able to bring down our absentee rate. Just, again, to, to be clear, chronic absenteeism is defined as a percentage of students missing ten percent or more of their days in membership. That means for a student who's, who's been here for the full year, we're talking about about eighteen days a year. We didn't have an incredibly high rate of chronic absenteeism, but even a handful of students is too many, in my opinion, for missing twenty days a year of, of school, and so we really wanna work on bringing that down. And lastly, we're gonna establish clear expectations for behavior in common areas, including the cafeteria, hallways, bathrooms, and school buses. Uh, those are the, teachers have a very, uh, you know, it's, it's, they have a classroom space that there are defined expectations, defined rules for each classroom, and it's easy enough for students to understand what's expected of them in those spaces. Uh, it's a little bit more difficult, especially with, uh, energetic. It's a little bit more difficult, especially with energetic adolescents, to, to help them understand exactly what the expectations are and, and hold them to those standards. But that's one of the challenges that we really need to take on and, and be able to be more clear with for them. So, excuse me. So those are our action plans in reflection of our strategic objectives. I'd like to thank the council members who contributed to our plan. I'd like to thank Melissa and Andy for being here tonight to help me present. Are there any questions from the committee that I can answer?
Any members, questions, comments? Ms. Heywood.
I do have a question. Do you, or where can we possibly find the specific data surrounding your, the targeted areas that you've listed in your strategic objectives?
Which type of data are you?
So when you talk about test scores, I'm just seeing generalizations?
No, I, no, I, we have the results from the accountability reports from the state that, that this is based on. I can certainly provide those for you.
Okay. Yeah. No, I just wanted to know, even just with the breakdown.
Sure.
When you talk about economically disadvantaged as opposed to, like, just seeing where the breakdown is in terms of scoring.
Sure. Yep, I can, I can certainly, I can certainly provide those for you. Absolutely.
I wanted to ask you a question, a question and then a comment. Engage in regular review of performance trends by the subgroup. Who will participate in that review? So if it's a SWD kid, it would be the special needs teacher and an administrator, who would participate in that?
No, because it really, it shouldn't be just an MSN or a special needs teacher. It really should be all the teachers who are dealing with that student. And, and our students, I mean, our, excuse me, our teachers speak about their students on a regular basis, but they don't have the data accessible, easily, easily accessible to them during that time. And so we give them a 48-minute block of time, once a week or once every other week, to be able to talk about the students collectively and really put their heads together about how to support an individual learner. And that's just not enough time without the right tools. Tools like Panorama would make that a much quicker process, give, again, the snapshot of, of the student and allow those teachers to have a more in-depth conversation. So being able to, again, look at the different markers for, for school success, it's all in there. And, and that would allow the administrative team to look at students of concern, it would allow teacher teams to look at students of concern, it would allow our child study team to be able to pull up a student's snapshot and be able to really figure out what would be the best course of action for that student.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Any other questions?
Kim and I, we went, we recently went to the MS, MS, M.A.C. Convention, and so there was a representative from Panorama.
Yeah, we actually talked to them. You had said you had had a demonstration.
Well, Dr. Campbell had given us.
Sarah, yeah.
Yeah, we met her.
Yeah, so I, I know.
I was there as well.
Yeah.
But you, we didn't see you.
It was a for day.
I know initially, I'd received the information from you, Dr. Campbell, in terms of Panorama, but then she actually went in and talked about the breakdown and, and really.
She showed us what the dashboard looked like.
Yeah, it's, it's an, I'm sorry, it's a really impressive platform that allows us to take the information that exists in our student information system, but break it down in, in real time, and you can drill down very easily as an educator, as an administrator, as a counselor. So it's taking what we have and synthesizing it and presenting it in a very user-friendly way. So what Mr. Morgan was talking about in terms of getting access to teachers, Panorama right now is working on creating securities and restrictions so that as a team, a team would have access to their students, but not have access to an entire building. So we're trying to protect the privacy of information and give it to those who should have it. You know, obviously, the counselor will have it for the whole team, the administrator will have it for the entire building, but just make sure that that's aligned that way. So this is actually the second year for the middle schools, and we also have it at the high schools this year as well. So it's, it's a great, it's a great progress monitoring tool that has a lot of potential to do a lot of really good things for us.
Aspen as an information system is a very powerful, very useful system, but it's designed to manage information, whereas Panorama is designed by educators who understand exactly what teachers and administrators and counselors will need at their fingertips to be able to help students more directly, as it kind of ferrets out all the other information and allows us to focus on, on the meat of the, of the situation.
Excellent.
Mr. Morgan was kind of previewed that at the beginning of the year for the teachers, and I know that the teacher response to was very strong. Like, as a teacher, I would love to have that kind of platform to see, oh, before I contact the student's parents, this is what's going on in their math class, this is what's going on in their science class. So is it a trend just in my class, or is it a trend, you know, overall? And so it's just valuable data for administrators and teachers to have.
And Ms. Loretta's also in a, in a unique situation as a specialist in our building, doesn't necessarily have as much contact or, or communication with the other teachers who a student shares. And so to be able to have that access to that information makes it a much easier process for him to be able to check in with which teachers he may need to based upon what he sees in that program.
Does that conclude your report?
It does.
Thank you. That was excellent. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. And if you are around tomorrow, would like to come to our very loud pep rally. Dr. Masters will tell you it's the loudest room in Plymouth.
What'd you say?
Yes, exactly. 12:45, come on over.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and now to the MASC resolution conclusions.
Okay. So I'll just go through them and let you know. Resolution one, which was rejecting the arming of educators, just like our vote, it was voted unanimously approved with no discussion, which it just says a lot. Resolution two, the small and rural districts. There was a motion made that this was actually two resolutions, it's two separate issues. So they made a motion to separate it, and that was approved, and then both parts were adopted. Resolution three, the elimination of the Federal Department of Education. There was one small amendment made, because if you read it, it says the elimination of the Federal Department of Education. They needed to add rejecting the, to the title. So that was approved, once that was added. That was just a miss, like, just a weird thing. Resolution four, regional school transportation. That one actually was not approved, and it was sent back to the table, back to the sponsor to work through some more details. So that one was not approved. Resolution five, reporting the accountability standards, that, that was passed, I think, almost unanimously. Oh, no, wait a second. Yes, I'm sorry. Resolution six, the reproductive health education, that actually also was suggested that it was two parts, and that was approved, and both parts were approved. So, you know, basically, what you read there was approved, but just they separated into two separate issues. Resolution seven, the gender identity inclusive policy was actually, and I did, I just, I did mention a little bit about this, and I know Vedna knows, Lee was actually, she sat next to me, even though she couldn't vote, because she wanted to learn the process. I kind of look at it, I know this is going to sound really strange, but I feel like we were given a gift, because I have a friend that's on the Melrose School Committee who's transgender, who I, we sat with her during this. And there are two identified that I know of transgender school committee members, and both were, were very vocal during this. And I think being able to sit, that Lee and I were sitting with Liz, and we could hear, like, you know, she whispered in our ear, like, her thoughts and how she felt about this, and what happened to her as a young person, really was pretty amazing for me, at least enlightening. There were a few other amendments made to that. They actually took out the words gender neutral, which Lee and I both said, we didn't, we don't know if we would have known to do that. But what Liz stood up, and she said, by adding that word, gender neutral, it means separate but equal, because these students want either a boy or girl, they don't want a gender neutral. They want to be able to go to either the boys locker room or the girls locker room. So they actually, that passed to remove those words from it. One amendment that was added, that was approved, was that they wanted MIAA to ensure that the standards were adhered to. And then the, the paragraph that we had voted, that we wanted it to approve, that actually was, was not approved. And it was very, very interesting conversation, and Liz kind of put it into light for Lee and I, was that, and actually, the other, the other woman, Jackie, stood up, and she said that when she was in high school, reasonable accommodations meant she got to change in a closet. It was really emotional. And so that, I actually did not vote for it, because I was instructed not to, but I also was a teller, so I was standing up counting the room when the vote took place. But they, it was really interesting. And what Liz had said anyways, and because the election was the day before, or two days before, this is question, was it question three? This was question three anyways. So this is, everything that was in this resolution is a law. So with or without those reasonable accommodations, that is a law. It could have been changed had that, that question been voted down. But basically, this is just saying that everybody supports it and that they're going to continue to fight for these rights. And then there was one more. Oh, I think that was it. So the resolution passed with those few amendments, but I think the main thing that's not in there now, and that the most important amendment to this, was getting the MIAA to back up, back up the accountability. But like I said, it was really interesting, and I think, I think that we kind of had that unique situation where we were able to discuss this during every, every motion, every vote with Liz, so it was pretty cool. So that passed. The sports wagering had a lot of discussion. It did pass, but there were a lot of people that just did not want to support it no matter what. But I think that the general consensus said, you know, if it happens and there is sports ragering and there is going to be money made from it, then the schools need to get some, which is what we talked about. Resolution nine, which was access to information for parents, that one actually had a couple of some friendly amendments, and I think we talked about this, instead of school days, they had business days. And then there was another amendment to add some more language. It was adopted as amended. And I have, there's, there's a few different things here that I can show you. And then that's it. That was it.
Okay.
So it was, it was pretty good, and it was good that Lee was there with me, too, and she actually, you know, got to hear the process. And I was appointed a teller the minute I sat down, so I had to count people when they did their votes. But other than that, it was, it wasn't too, too long, which these things tend to be sometimes.
Committee members with any questions or follow-up or additions to this report? Pretty comprehensive. Thank you for covering all of them. Appreciate it.
Yeah, this actually isn't published yet, so when Dr. Sorenson asked me to present this, I actually wrote to them and they sent me this. So it's not on the website yet, but if anybody wants to see it, I, I can email, they sent me a PDF of this.
Okay, can I move on to our next agenda item, which is school fundraising? Any report on that, in that area this evening? Nothing to report?
The fundraising update has been updated.
Yep. Okay. Reports and proposals from committee members. Ms. Hunt.
Okay. I just want to look at my notes. I don't know if you want Vedna and I to talk about the MASC today, or if you want to put that on a thing. I can go over the, there are a couple of points from the conference that I wanted to mention. I don't know if you want me to do that at another time. You know, sometimes you put that on the agenda.
Does the committee want an agenda item for that? Should we, so we'll put that on a future agenda?
Yeah.
Update from the conference?
And then I saw that we are starting to look for the Shishikahama applications. Have we gotten any in?
No, we haven't sent it out yet, so we will do that.
Great. And I actually got some, and I meant to bring them today, but we got some, I got a package from Shishikahama the other day with some letters, and they made an anniversary, a book about Shishikahama with some pictures, and I have a copy for you to bring to you next time.
So this is important, an important discussion, because we need to form a committee, because what happens is when the applications come in, we actually have a committee that interviews the students, does a recommendation. So we need to get some folks for that, and then we'll get the application out right after Thanksgiving. So we'll probably have it out for two to three weeks. We'll do announcements at both middle schools, make sure the principals put it in their announcements every day for those, that period of time, encourage students to, to fill the application up, and then we'll have a team get together on a, on a evening or weekend and have these interviews for the full day or a long night.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's a long process.
Rising tide as well?
Yeah.
We do rising tide, absolutely.
We actually had an equal amount of Plymouth South, yeah.
It's a great experience for the kids to come in and interview, and that's probably one of the most impressive things of the whole process, you know?
Right, right. And, and actually, Andy Loretta, who just presented, is the newest member of the Distinguished Resorters Committee, too. So as, you know, I'd like to get him involved in the process as much as possible, too, because he's very.
Well, he's just, then he just got nominated for a member to interview.
Yeah, I know, it's too bad he left.
He can interview now.
And then I think the only other thing, and Vedna and I actually both went to the Be Safe, what's it called, gun safety presentation on Friday. And it's basically put, put forth by the Moms Demand Action Everytown Committee, and I know that you did it last March for the parents, and we talked to them afterwards, and I think that maybe we're hoping to do another forum this year. It was, it was very interesting. It was, you know, I, I liked the way that they kind of talk about how it's, it's non-political. It's basically, if, you know, they're fine, if you have a gun, you have a gun, but this is what you need to do to keep it safe. And there was a parent there, it was very heartbreaking, who lost a child. And they, you know, I think in between every little bit of information, they told another story about a child that was killed or hurt. But it was, it was very interesting. I'm glad I went. It was a Friday night, so it was a little tough to drag yourself out to go to that, and it was very emotional, but it was good. And I hope that we, we get a chance to bring that back to the parents again this year. And that's it for me.
Ms. Bajra.
I just wanted to say that I went to the Midsummer Night's Dream, was it, two Fridays ago? They did an excellent job for something that, like, you know, it's Shakespeare, and Shakespeare is wonderful, but you could tell that they really understood what they were saying, you know, like, they, they were, you know, empowered by the words of William Shakespeare. It wasn't just that they were reciting it off and, you know, but they understood, and it was, it was really well done in that space. It was just very, it was a different way to see it, so it was really great.
Ms. Burgess.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about illuminate Plymouth. I mean, Saturday was a very great day for our school and the community. The, the band always represents us very well in it, but, but the illuminate Plymouth was mostly Plymouth Public Schools, right?
Yeah. My cousin was involved.
I think we had a dancer from the Dance Factory, other than that.
She did a fantastic job.
They should have had her inside at the thing.
She did a fantastic job.
I couldn't believe how cold she must have been. But anyhow, what a showcase to the community. It's too bad that more people couldn't see it, but if we can do this kind of thing, you know, take, take us to the community, they'd see just how wonderful these kids do.
That's right.
And it was a treat for everybody, I think, to see the ukulele kids singing, and then one that got all jumped, you know, she, she really got into it, one of them. She, she was just happy.
Fantastic job.
So it was a good thing, and I'm glad I attended, yeah.
Anything else on the reports and proposals from committee members?
I just want to say one thing. So we, I guess with our on-the-roads that we've done so far, so this morning- done so far. So this morning, we went to West, West Elementary.
West Elementary.
And when I talk about a group of articulate elementary school children, it was amazing.
Yeah.
It's amazing how, you know, just their level of maturity and, and just their ability just to kind of honestly articulate what is happening in their school and, and how that affects them. It was, it was amazing to see.
Okay.
Burgess.
Now, on, on that note, after, after we went to the school, we went to, which was really a great day. But we went, I went to Market Basket Shopping. And when I came out, there was a Plymouth Public School bus pulled right up in front of the doors.
Oh, yes.
And there were teachers and kids all piling into the bus. So I said to one of the teachers at the end of the line, I said, you know, what, what is this? And she says, oh, she says, oh, I'm so glad you asked. And she goes, well, we've just gone shopping for our dinner for tomorrow. And it was all the, the, what was it? The skills?
Life skills.
The life skills. It was all life-skilled kids with their teachers. And they were shopping for their dinner for the next day at school, that they were going to make at school. It was great. So I'm glad I asked. And we were just at West, and they knew it. But it's...
Yeah. And that, and that goes for West, that goes for PCIS. And even, even the PEC.
Yeah.
Even PEC. I just, you know, I, we were divided into groups. And I was just doing a project with this little girl. And I, you know, and just, maybe just in my mind, thinking perhaps she didn't know. And it was the look of, of course I know. So it was, yeah. We have amazing programs here.
I miss, I miss not being able to go to those.
Then I went to the Veterans Program. And now my, the name escapes me, the man who does it. And I know him as well as my aunt.
Jeremy Hales?
Yes, Jeremy Hales. He does a fantastic job every year. And this year, though, and on the second program, there were more than 30 veterans there. Nobody, nobody really wants to get up that early for the first ones. They sort of slide in later.
Is that you included, Ms. Burgess?
No, Ms. Burgess was there.
But I was there.
Is that the one at the high school?
But, but anyway, yes, I did both, both programs and the lunch. But it, it is a great thing, and it's a great honor. And they were honoring a 97-year-old Everett Landman. That we, everybody knew him as Red Landman. And he was, he worked at the Plymouth Savings Bank all his career. And, but anyway, there aren't many WWII vets around anymore. And it was good to see him. Yeah. So it was, it was a very good day. Thank you to Jeremy Hales.
Do we have a report from the Building Committee?
Oh, yes. That's if I can get it open. I'll get this one. Okay. Plymouth South High School. Plymouth South High School is completed. They said that there's no equipment left on the site. And so they sort of, they've actually dropped themselves right out of it. So that's, that's good.
Yes.
You have anything to add to that?
No, they're just finishing up little issues that have arisen and things of that nature. Yeah.
But they said, there's not even any landscaper, nothing. Well, it's getting kind of...
Yeah, the cold. They're coming back.
The landscaping. Anyway. And on the Russell Street parking deck, the bottom, bottom of it is paved. That's the, yeah, the one that's built into Burial Hill on, on Russell Street. And anyway, and the, they're going to be finishing the concrete by the first of January. And the library roof, they're already, they've got a bid that's accepted, and the contract was, was mailed. But they've added a 40-day extension. I can't remember the reason, but, do you remember the reason why they gave that extension on the roof? No. I'm not sure even if they went into it, because I might have written it down. On the Plymouth Fire Station, things are on hold. They're going to do the bidding after January 1st, hoping that there's bidding. It's, it's a little tough right now, bidding for contractors, because everybody's working. And there's a lot of them that just don't want your job. And before, it was like everybody was clamoring to work for anybody. So anyway, it's a very low-maintenance design. The, they were talking about conservation and the drain design. And we don't know about the roofing. We're still questioning the, why they're not putting solar on it. And they were talking about putting now radiant heat in the floor as one of the extras. And we don't know whether it's green or not. They don't, the town doesn't seem to be doing anything green, even on the library. There's plenty of room on the solar roof, because I, I was on the Energy Committee when we went and looked at it before. But for some reason, it's not happening green. Maritime facility sub-bids were open, will be open, well, next Thursday, which was last Thursday, actually. And so we'll see what happens with that. New Town Hall, the weather's not favorable for the roofing repair. And other projects, really, there's not too much going on with this. There's nothing going on with the south shed of the Public Works Building. The airport building is state and federal, so that's, but it's moving. And they, because they voted for the 1749 courthouse at the town meeting to be able to do something in there. But there's nothing happening. We, we think we're getting it, but, on the Building Committee, but we don't have it. So that's it.
Mr. Morgan, anything to add?
No. She covered it well.
Questions from the, on the Building Committee report from anybody? All right. Thank you, Ms. Burgess. Homeschool?
Yes. Tonight, we have four homeschool plans that have been reviewed by Dr. Halpin's office. And they do meet the guidelines set forth by the School Committee, and I recommend approval.
You've heard the recommendations, motion made by Ms. Badger to approve the recommendation administration. Is there a second to that? Mr. Morgan's the second. Any questions on homeschool? Okay, let's vote. And everybody has voted in favor. Thank you, Dr. Mastis. Accounts payable.
Okay. Whereas School Committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and the warrant for review, I move, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant number S-112118 dated November 21st, 2018, in the amount of $1,845,240.24 as presented.
Is there a second to that? Ms. Burgess is the second. Are there any questions on that? All right. We'll vote for the warrant, please.
All right. I was looking at it. Nothing was happening. Good now.
Well, I guess it came up.
Works better when you use the mouse. I figured out the hard way.
But that was unanimous.
Me, too.
Okay. Now we have some minutes to, to do, committee members. We'll start with October the 1st. What's your pleasure?
I...
Ms. Hunt?
I wasn't able to, I couldn't read the minutes.
Two cents.
Yeah. I couldn't open up any of them. There were no links on any of them when I checked it.
Really?
It was earlier in the, it was, like, the day that they came out is the day that I tried to look at them.
So they, they did come staggered.
Oh, okay. All right. So I can look at them real quick.
Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve October 1st School Committee minutes as presented.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the minutes of October the 1st. Is there a second?
No, second.
Ms. Burgess is the second. Is there a question on those? Okay, then we're going to vote on those. So everybody voted in favor.
I'll move the executive session.
And now we have a motion from Ms. Burgess to move the, the executive session minutes of the 1st. Is that seconded by anybody? Mr. Morgan is the second on that one? And then we'll take the vote on the executive session of October the 1st.
Question.
Question.
So my, and I don't know, maybe it's, it's probably always how this looks. But my question is, does it usually read, it says executive session minutes, and then it says regular meeting of the Plymouth School Committee? Is that correct?
No.
It just looked really funny to me.
No.
In the joint meeting, you have to somehow recognize that it started in open session. So that's just a little...
Okay. So it's always that way. It just looks different.
That discussion has come up before.
I don't know what's wrong with my brain. It just looked different.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we'll vote for those, please.
Yeah, exactly.
That's good. Thank you.
I'm waiting for my sweet potato pie.
And everybody has voted in favor of that. And now we have the October the 15th.
Yeah. I can get them real quick.
Move it.
Did you move it?
Yeah.
Ms. Burgess moves October the 15th. Is there a second? Mr. Morgan is the second on a question. I have one, one minor change. On the first page of the minutes, it says that the meeting was called to order at 7:00 PM. It actually should say 6:30 PM. So with that change, we shall take the vote on the minutes of October the 15th.
Sorry, I was still just scanning.
Everybody voted in favor.
Yeah.
Actually, we had one abstention. Did I miss Michelle's? Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, now we have executive session of October the 15th.
I'll move it.
Ms. Burgess moves the executive session of October the 15th. Is there a second? Mr. Morgan is the second. Are there any questions? Okay, we'll take that vote. We have one abstention, and everybody else voting in favor. And now we have open session for October the 20th. Is there a motion? Ms. Badger?
I move we approve...
Thank you. Is there a second?
As presented.
Second for the 20th. Mr. Morgan, is there a second? There's a second for Mr. Morgan on the 20th.
I've got a question.
Question, Ms.?
It says October 20, 22, 23.
Yeah, that's because that was the town meeting.
Oh, okay. Got it. Yep, yep.
Carried over.
Okay, yep.
Okay.
Okay. Now I understand.
Any other questions? All those in favor? I mean, let's take the vote.
Trying to steer our way.
Hi.
All right, everyone. One abstention. And now we go to the October 30th meeting with the Board of Selectmen in executive session. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Ms. Burgess moves it. Is there a second? Ms. Badger is the second. Is there a question? Your questions?
No, go ahead. Oh, um, the 30th. I don't, I don't think I was even in attendance.
No.
I wasn't in attendance.
Says we were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I don't, yeah. I don't think...
I wasn't in attendance, but it states that I am.
No, it says you were abstained.
No.
It does?
Yeah.
Yeah, under a roll call.
Where?
Here, it starts.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Oh, you have to look for the period.
I see.
Sort of.
It's tiny.
Yeah.
It is. Well, whatever.
Any other questions?
I had one, and now I...
Yes.
Hold on.
Ms. Badger?
So where it says on the second page, I know it's, it's me, because I took, I'm pretty sure this is when I took the notes. And there was no seconded, because I must have left the second off on the list, for the motion. Does that matter? Do we grab that from the selectmen? Or, probably doesn't even matter.
On the second page?
Second page, it says motion by Mrs. Cavaco. And just no second listed, because I messed up my, I'm not a very good secretary.
So does it truly matter? It doesn't?
Does it matter? Yeah, I guess that's my question.
It is incumbent upon the selectmen to keep the official record. Ours is for our record. So does it matter to you?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
It matters to the selectmen.
Okay.
But they will have that in their notes.
Okay.
Good question, though.
Thanks.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve these, and we'll take the vote. All right. It looks like there are two abstentions, and the remaining four members have voted in favor. So that has passed. And that concludes all of the minutes.
Was it two abstentions?
Right. Is there any other business to come before the School Committee? Seeing no hands, we shall stand adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanksgiving.